Please, uh, Ms. Councilwoman Abdo, would you do the honors for the pleasure?
Oh, yes. I pledge allegiance to, are we ready?
I'm ready.
Everybody's ready? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Abdo.
You're welcome.
Good evening, City Council. To all the honorable elected officials, to our deputy clerk, to our city treasurer, Mayor Burcroft, administrative, administrative staff and listening audience. Today is Monday, February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, and this is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom Meeting Telecommunication Platform. Tonight's meeting ID number is eight-three-two-two-six-eight-three-six-six-nine-eight. This meeting is being held pursuant to Public Act two fifty-four of two thousand and twenty and the Remote Participation in Public Meetings Policy adopted by City Council on December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, Resolution Number twenty-dash-three-fifty-five. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from a Zoom Meeting Application. To join the meeting by phone, call one-six-four-six-five-five-eight-eight-six-five-six, and when prompted, enter the meeting ID followed by the pound sign. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the City Council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment section of the meeting. And at this time, we did have a study session, Mr. Chair, but I'm gonna go ahead and just have one more roll call. Okay? All right. Councilwoman Abdo?
Here.
Councilman Barton?
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe?
Here.
Councilwoman Tally?
Here.
And we, uh, we know that Councilman Wattsworth is absent this evening.
Excuse.
So noted. Councilwoman Webb?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Williams. Great. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one agenda, number two minutes, number three petitioner, number four chairperson's report, number five mayor's report, six clerks' report, seven treasurer's report, eight public comment, nine unfinished business, ten new business, eleven warrant, number twelve communication, and number thirteen adjournment, and a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the tonight's meeting agenda, agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number two, or the minutes. Agenda item two A, for approval are the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven-thirty P M.
So moved for approval of the minutes from Monday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Support.
In motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of minutes from a regular meeting held February the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Agenda item two B, for approval are the minutes from the special meetings held, um, on February eighth. There was a closed session at five o'clock P M. to discuss attorney opinion, and a public hearing held, um, also on February eighth at six o'clock P M. to discuss demolition list twenty-dash-zero-one. Motion would be in order.
I'll make that motion for approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on two-twenty-one.
Support.
In motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for special media was held on, uh, two-eight-twenty-one. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
There are no petitioners on the agenda. Takes us to number four, the chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, at six-thirty, tonight, we had a, uh, study session to discuss our charter amendment. And, uh, I'd just like to say, uh, about the, uh, D P W did a good job on the snow removal.
Uh.
Uh, they always do a good job. I, you know, I think our D P W is second to none. Uh, I know maybe not everyone got, uh, opportunity to get, uh, some snow removal, but I'm sure that our department in Romulus did a great job and the best they could. Uh, at this time, I'm going to, uh, recognize, uh, Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, um, Mr. Barton. I'd like to make a, uh, resolution for a ninety-fourth birthday, if I can get support.
Support.
Okay.
Mrs. Florence Rupert, who is my neighbor, turned ninety-four years old February second, and there will be a drive-by celebration for her on Sunday, February twenty-eighth at two P M. So happy birthday, Mrs. Rupert, ninety-four years old.
Wow, that is great. That is great, uh, Ms. Webb. It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, for li- resolution for, Ms. Roper, who's ninety-four years young. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Uh, let's go to conclude the chairperson's report tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, uh, to, uh, approve the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Takes us to number five, the mayor's report.
Evening, uh, City Council Clerk, Deputy Clerk, Treasurer, and those in the audience. Um, uh, tonight, Mr. Chairman, I, I actually brought a quote that kind of relates to the point you made, and it comes out of Proverbs twelve, verse twenty-five. Anxious hearts weigh heavy on a man down, but kind words will cheer him up or lift him up. And I thought those were great words for not just D P W, uh, but, you know, we had a great team effort, um, with our snow emergency. Uh, everybody at D P W, Police Department Ordinance, the towers, uh, the whole team. I had several meetings with some people from outside of our community, and as they came and hit our boundary roads and into the city, um, they complimented on how Romulus had better roads than, uh, at least any of the other traveled roads that the people I had meetings with. So, well done, team. Thank you for the residents who did also, um, adhere to the snow emergency, and those that didn't, hopefully will get that message because that keeps our, uh, first responders able to, um, uh, provide service and keeps our residents safe as well. So, thanks to all. Uh, also, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to give a, a, a birthday wish to Councilwoman Roscoe, who has a birthday tomorrow. Uh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Roscoe.
Enjoy.
I appreciate it.
Twenty-nine years old. All right.
You got it.
And, uh, also, uh, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to, uh, have Director Kraus come on and talk a little bit briefly about, uh, the COVID and the vaccine and some things that are going on. He probably have seen a lot of, uh, communication, um, via emails and, uh, newsletters and news stations and, and Facebook and others, and just want to have him maybe state a couple of facts about, uh, what we have going on and what did, uh, you know, kind of create this opportunity, uh, for the COVID vaccine. Director Kraus, are you there, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Council, and Madam Clerk and Madam Treasurer. Uh, just wanted to briefly speak on, uh, the COVID, um, vaccination pod that we're gonna be sitting up, uh, setting up tomorrow at this, uh, Romulus Senior Center. Uh, first, we want to start out by saying that the, uh, you know, Wayne County Public Health Department is presently vaccinating individuals, um, still in Phase One A and select groups of Phase One B of the COVID Vaccination Distribution Plan that has been set forth by the county. Uh, these groups include our frontline healthcare workers, first responders, law enforcement officers, um, teachers. It includes the, um, the, uh, extended care facilities such as your nursing homes, your, like, our senior towers and Whispering Willows. Um, and then also now we are moving into, um, one of the other select groups in the, in the, uh, One B, uh, distribution plan, which is our seniors. And they're gonna be eligible to receive the vaccine, and they should coordinate with, um, you know, as you saw in the news, they're saying coordinate with as many sources as possible and get on as many lists as possible in order to get the vaccine as soon as possible for each individual. So they're referring them to, uh, your local pharmacies, their personal care provider, um, vaccination pods such, such as the one that we're gonna be setting up tomorrow. Um, supplies are very limited to all providers still, so we're asking everyone to be patient. Give us, you know, give us a minute to work through some of the kinks that come with, um, you know, mass vaccination in short periods of time sometimes because, um, as this is unrolled since Thursday, late Thursday afternoon into, uh, tomorrow morning, when we start, we were given very short notice. Um, we were reached out to by Wayne County Senior Services, uh, originally through Rose, our senior director. Um, and then I, I kind of, uh, spearheaded that from there and coordinated with, with the county. Um, there's some miscommunication at first, and we had to get some, uh, some things lined up and make sure everything was, uh, in place. Uh, there has been other, um, senior vaccination points, uh, throughout Wayne County, but most of those have been done through a private agency. Might have been federal vaccine designations that were given to, um, a pharmacy or a, um, you know, a, a healthcare provider that was on a list. It, it's been somewhat random, um, how the federal distribution has been given out. Um, some is goes to the state for specific, uh, uh, target groups, and some comes through the Wayne County, um, Health Department or the county departments. So we've been, we've been working through those and trying to get as, as much as we could. Um, ultimately, we've secured five hundred and fifty vaccinations. Uh, when we put our list or our call out last week on, on Thursday and Friday, we immediately filled a list that was well over eight hundred individuals. Because these are Wayne County vaccinations, we can't limit them to Romulus-only residents. Um, so we have to take, you know, the, the people that are on that list and, and call them accordingly. Um, currently tomorrow morning, we're gonna be at the Senior Center from eight A M. until four P M. vaccinating from nine to three. We have twelve individuals scheduled every ten minutes to move through that station tomorrow for a total of five hundred and fifty vaccines. Of the eight hundred people that were on that list, Wayne County called and scheduled those individuals. If they made a phone call and they did not get an answer, they left a voicemail to call back. If they called back and there was still a spot on the list, they were scheduled. If they were not, they confirmed contact information, and they are still on a list for the next date that we receive for vaccinations. I've been told by Wayne County that we will be given another date, but I have not been told what that date is yet. We are the first this week of three other cities that are gonna be, um, um, hosting a pod. I'm sure you've seen over the weekend on, on the news and, and just at six o'clock or five o'clock this evening on the news, um, all of the cities that have announced that they were hosting senior vaccines, uh, were inundated with phone calls. We had, uh, to the point where, you know, uh, I T had issues today with our phone system because of it. We were so inundated and as well as Canton and Plymouth, uh, some of the other, uh, townships. Um, we just asked that you're patient with us. We're gonna work people through, uh, through this point of dispensary and, uh, do our best to get everyone that wants a vaccine, a vaccine through the process.
Thank you, Director Kraus. Appreciate it.
Excuse me, Mayor. My, uh, just one question for the chief. Is there a website that our residents should go to, or is there a phone number?
Good question. So, um, the, the flyer and the information that we posted last Thursday and Friday was the Senior Center's phone number, and I, I apologize, I don't have that phone number off the top of my head. Um, but to call the Senior Center, um, and they will put your name on a list, and that list, uh, is, we're still gonna continue to gather names. Um, if there's an overflow from that list of eight hundred, those first two or three hundred will be scheduled, and any additional names that we gather between now and the next, um, date that we are given and the, when we're given the number of the next am- amount of vaccines that we get, anyone on that list will be, uh, will be called in an attempt to schedule a vaccine.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Director. Um, Mr. Chairman, I do have some action items also I'd like to get into if we could. Uh, the first of which is item A. Uh, this is a, um, recommendation from Julie Albert, our Director of Assessing and Financial Services, uh, and it's a request to concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution for the City of Romulus Poverty Exemption for two thousand and twenty-one to be used by the Board of Review.
Through the chair.
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally.
Y'all like to make the motion to concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution for the City of Romulus Poverty Exemption for two thousand and twenty-one to be used by the Board of Review.
For.
In motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, to concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution for the City of Romulus Poverty Exemption for two thousand and twenty-one to be used by the Board of Review. Any discussion? Here is no discussion. Roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, City Council. Uh, next is a recommendation from Steve Hitchcock, our city attorney. Um, also want to thank Councilwoman Abdo on this, um, um, lease committee, uh, to negotiate, and, uh, what's before you is a, a request to concur with the administration and grant the authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached lease agreement with the City of Romulus Municipal Library located at one-one-one-two-one Wayne Road here in the City of Romulus.
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally.
Um, I would like to make that motion. I do have a brief comment to concur with the administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached lease agreement with the City of Romulus Municipal Library located at one-one-one-two-one Wayne Road, Romulus, Michigan, four-eight-one-seven-four.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb for, to concur with the administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached lease agreement with the City of Romulus Municipal Library located at one-one-one-two-one Wayne Road, Michigan, four-eight-one-seven-four. Discussion, Ms. Tally?
Yes, I just want to, uh, concur with the mayor. Um, I'm just happy that, um, we had a meeting of the minds regarding the lease. Thank you, Ms. Abdo, for your participation in it, um, and everything, everybody working together to come to an amicable agreement. Thank you.
And through the chair, if I may?
Yes, I'm Ms. Webb.
Also, first of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues, Councilwoman Wasworth and Councilwoman Abdo for their negotiating skills. Also, I'd like to thank the, um, Library Committee. We have Jim, and I believe Patty's on, on, um, on Zoom tonight, and thank our administration. We all have to work together, and you've done a great job, and I give kudos to her kudos are due, and thank you all.
I'd also like to say, uh, good job, uh, all around, Ms. Abdo, uh, library, uh, the mayor, administration. And, and that's what you call, like, Tina, I always say teamwork, make the dream work. So, you know, good job, uh, Ms. Webb and everyone for, uh, sticking together with the mayor. Good job, and let's just keep moving forward. Good things happen in the City of Romulus.
Amen.
Thank you.
I'd also like to make a comment.
Okay, uh, Ms. Roscoe.
It shows what, um, you know, working together can do. A few years back, we didn't even have the library open, and, uh, and now we do. And we have to work together to keep that open and, and go forward in everything we do in the community to keep what services our residents need on a daily basis, and the library is definitely one of the most important things that we have here.
Amen.
I thank you to everyone that made this work, and, um, going forward, it just shows that, you know, due diligence always perseveres. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe. Uh, Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would just like to, I, I just want to be clear because I know when we first talked about the library lease, uh, it was said, uh, by the mayor, and so I want to make it clear, uh, and this is to the mayor. Is the library paying all the utilities, or is the city responsible?
There's a percentage that they are paying that's calculated. I can send you. There's not separate meters. We have one line that comes into the complex, so they have a broken out percentage that, uh, guesstimates. So, yes, they do pay a portion of utilities.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's no other comments. Roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next action item is also a recommendation from, uh, Steve Hitchcock, our city attorney. Uh, this one, we, we spoke about briefly in a, a, a study session prior, uh, but again, this is a, a request to concur with the administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached lease agreement for Growth Works Incorporated for the lease of a, uh, two thousand square foot section, the space, uh, at the new court building at one-one-one-one-three South Wayne Road on the second floor, which is just adjacent to the court offices for the thirty-fourth District Court Building. That's the new building.
Chair, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Roscoe?
To concur with administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached lease agreement with Growth Works Incorporated for the lease of two thousand square foot of space located at one-one-one-one-three South Wayne Road on the second floor of the thirty-fourth District Court Building.
Support.
In motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, and this is request to sign the lease with our growth, with the Growth Works Incorporated. Any discussion? Discussion?
Yes.
Uh, Ms., Ms., Ms. Williams?
Yes, I have a question on page, uh, thirty-nine.
Ms. Williams, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, okay.
On page thirty-nine, number, uh, up under six, number one, the operating expenses. So is the city responsible for the utilities, security? Um, and, uh, the garbage pickup, the landscaping, ventilation? Is, is the city responsible for all of these, for these, uh, this company?
I'll, I'll let, uh, Steve Hitchcock, who drafted the lease, answer, and I think we have Chief Fannus that wanted to chime in as well.
The answer is as to electricity, there, yeah, there is no separate meter, so they're just using part of what was the civil, gonna be the Civil Department of the court, so they, that will not be metered separately, but the other items you mentioned, uh, they're gonna pay their share of those and any maintenance costs that we have that's related to their use of it. The security, uh, any security costs, uh, that has to be there because they're open past four-thirty, the normal closing time of the court, they will pay in addition to this lease fee, those security costs. That will vary based upon, you know, how many nights a week it is that they have any meetings with patients there, as to how much they'll pay in a given year. We have the, 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 it's fifty dollars an hour is gonna be security cost. And depending on how much they use it, they'll pay that in addition to the rent cost.
Well, this particular company, uh, will be paying a total of seven hundred a month for two thousand square feet?
Seven hundred and fifty, I think it is, yeah. It's seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. It's four, it says four dollars and fifty cents a square foot.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Fannus.
If there's no any, no more questions, I'm.
I thought Chief Fannus had a question. Chief, are you there? Did you have a?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead.
He's on, but he's muted.
Chief can't hear you.
If the chief would press star six, that would unmute his phone?
Yeah, Mr. Hitchcock covered all that. I apologize for the mute issue.
Okay, if, okay. Roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next action item is a recommendation from, uh, Captain Darren Shelby and the city attorney, Stephen Hitchcock. Uh, this one is to concur with the administration authorized the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached intergovernmental agreement with the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development for an awarded grant for the training and education purposes for the Romulus Animal Shelter.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached intergovernmental agreement with the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development for the awarded grant for training and education purposes for the Romulus Animal Shelter.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, and those, uh, Michigan Department of Agricultural and Rural Development, two thousand and twenty-one animal welfare grant award. Any discussion?
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally.
Just want to give a shout out to Jill Martin, just been on top of these grants, and just everybody, the whole team, working to get these grants for our city. Just a great thing. Um, I know, uh, Jill does a lot of work, but I'm sure, again, as you thank you for earlier, this is a team approach, looking for these grants and pull it together for our city. So thanks to everybody, the whole team.
Amen.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. Uh, the next action item, again, a good team effort. This is, uh, recommendation from, uh, Chief Fannus, um, our very talented Gary Harris, Purchasing Director, and, uh, you know, jumping on another one of these piggyback deals. So this is a, uh, request to concur with the administration and consent to a piggyback on, uh, M D, my deal, contract zero-seven-one-B-six-six-zero-zero-one-two-six. That's to purchase ammunition for both practice and range and duty purposes. Uh, the amount's twelve thousand, one eighty-nine and sixty cents. It's from Vance Outdoor, Inc. These funds have been verified and available uh, out of the Public Safety Fund for the Department, uh, Certifications, License and Expense Account, and again, good work by getting on a, um, a volume discount.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that, Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion that we piggyback on the Michigan Deal Contract, zero-seven-one-B-six-six-zero-zero-one-two-six.
Support.
In motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for piggyback on M deal, uh, contract for the purchase of practice and duty ammunition for Romulus Police Department. Any discussion?
I have one question through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Webb.
Uh, I noticed that this is for the purchase of ammunition for both practice at the range and on duty purposes. Are there different, is there a different ammunition for practice, for, for a range practice than there is for on, on duty?
The answer is yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I wanted.
Chief, did you want to comment on it?
No, I was just going to respond, yes. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, the, the practice ammunition is a lower quality, uh, less expensive ammunition than the duty ammunition.
Thank you, because I just wanted the public to know that there is a difference in, in the cost, that it's not. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you, chief. Thank you, mayor.
Good point. Thank you, chief.
Roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. Uh, the next action item is a recommendation from Director Kevin Kraus, uh, and also Gary Harris, purchasing director. Uh, this one is to concur with the administration and extend the contract from our I T B twenty slash twenty-one dash zero five with Davenport Masonry, Inc. That's for the repairs of the south elevation of the fire station four at two eight, seven, seven, seven Eureka Road. Uh, the amount is fourteen thousand, nine hundred. Uh, and the additional ten, uh, ten percent contingency for unforeseen things that may come up. Uh, that is also funds have been verified and available out of our Public Safety, uh, Fire Department Capital Outlay Account.
Up through the chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb.
I'll make that motion to concur and extend the contract with Davenport Masonry, Inc. And I do have a comment.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally for extension of the pricing from I T B twenty slash twenty-one dash oh five with Davenport Main Street, Masonry, structural repair, fire station number four. Discussion, Ms. Webb?
Yes, no, I was just, I, I just had to mention, uh, that I believe, um, mayor, when we were there at the, uh, open house, there was, um, I remember we were talking about that south, uh, elevation back then. And you had said that this would be coming before council soon. And it's been, what, about a year, year and a half or so? So I'm glad to see it happening.
It's much needed. And actually where the prices came in, we're able to do this portion of the building a little sooner, which is, uh, very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. Uh, next is a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici, our D P W director, uh, and Gary Harris, purchasing director. Uh, this one is a request to concur with the administration and authorize the refurbishing of the D P W Greatall uh, by A I S Construction Equipment, uh, under the terms of a sole source purchase exception uh, in section thirty-nine point eleven, uh, of our purchasing ordinance. The amount for this, uh, repair is ninety-three thousand. Uh, these funds have been verified and budgeted and coming out of the motor vehicle capital outlay account that's listed.
Chair, I'll make that motion.
Yes, Ms. Roscoe?
For the refurbishing of the Greatall with A I S Construction Equipment and the amount of ninety-three thousand dollars.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo for the refurbishing Greatall with A I, A I S Construction Equipment. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, through the chair, if I may, I just have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Webb.
Being compared to four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, ninety-three dollars is like a drop in the bucket. Plus, it, it, it has a lifespan, the repair for ten years. So, um, thank you, Gary. If you're still on, thank you.
Yeah, that's a vital piece of equipment for D P W also.
Good job, good job. Uh, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. Uh, the last action item I do have is just a budget amendment. Um, this is to concur with the administration and introduce budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash fourteen. That's to recognize the budget amendment for the May fourth, twenty twenty-one's, uh, special school election. Uh, and it's a forty-five thousand dollar budget amendment.
Chair, I'll make that motion.
Yes, Ms. Roscoe?
To concur with the administration and introduce budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash fourteen to recognize a budget amendment for May fourth, twenty twenty-one for the special school election.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb for, to concur with the administration and introduce budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash fourteen to recognize a budget amendment for May fourth, twenty twenty-one, special school board, special school election. Any discussion? Here, no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms., Ms., uh, Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. Uh, the last comment just before I close out is on the topic of the, of the vaccines and the phone calls. Um, just want to give a shout out to both Jess and Jill and the mayor's office and also those at the senior center. We were, um, we were quite bombarded by many a phone calls and we still were able to keep great customer service going, uh, in lieu of all those, uh, calls. So, uh, Steve Dudek, as always, uh, was watching the phone system, making sure that, uh, he was on top of what was happening and, and doing some tweaks to keep that happening. So thank you, Steve, for your efforts. A lot goes on behind the scenes, a lot of times that the residents don't know, but, um, we're going to continue to do the best to provide, uh, awesome customer service. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, mayor.
Hey, number six is the clerk's report. I have one action item. Um, before I ask you to take action, I'd just like to thank you for passing that budget amendment for the special election. Uh, just want to point out that one hundred percent of the expenditures to hold that election, um, that it is reimbursable. So that's, so again, thank you.
Thank you.
Six A one, we have a study session request from Mayor Burcroft for Mayor, uh, March first, twenty twenty-one at six o'clock P M. And this is to discuss honorary street sign dedication policy. We, um, the date and time is available for this study session. And please note, um, that there is also a study session on that date at six thirty. So you'll have a study session at six, uh, for the honorary street sign dedication. And then at six thirty, there, uh, you had approved, uh, it's already approved for a study session to discuss the quarterly investment report.
Thank you. Need a motion?
I'll make that motion for the study session request for March first, twenty twenty-one for the honorary street sign dedication policy.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe for a study session request from Mayor Burcroft for March first, twenty twenty-one at six P M. To discuss honorary street sign dedication policies. If no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, council. That will conclude the clerk's report. Number seven is the treasurer's report.
Hello, good evening, council, mayor, clerk, deputy clerk, and listening audience. First, I wanted to say to the deputy clerk, I absolutely love your background. That's refreshing. And I'd also like to remind our residents that, um, this is the final week for tax collection before we send it to the county next week. So I just want to remind everyone that we are still taking payments. And of course, if you have any questions, please contact the office at seven, three, four, nine, four, two, seven, five, eight, zero. We also have, um, the Dropbox. And of course, um, you, you may come into the building as well as credit card and over the phone payment. So again, last week for, for payments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you.
Number eight is public comment. And this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address city council. The raised hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you've joined the meeting, uh, online, use the raised hand icon from the meeting app. Tap the microphone icon to unmute when acknowledged and to mute yourself when finished. If you've dialed in, um, from a touchstone, touchtone phone, press star nine from your phone to raise your hand and press star six from your phone to unmute. And when acknowledged, again, um, press star six to mute yourself when finished. After you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. Any additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. Um, for the record, we ask that you please state your name. Um, as a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. And I do not see any raised hands at this time. Mr. Gray, I just got a message from Gina Stewart. She would like to speak, but for some reason, the raised hand is not working. Okay, um, all right, Mr. Chair, we have, uh, Ms. Stewart, um, that is requesting to speak. And again, you will have three minutes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Gina Wilson Stewart. Um, and I just wanted to say happy Black History Month to everyone. I just have a quote from John Lewis. Every generation leaves behind a legacy. What that legacy will be is determined by the people of that generation. What legacy do you want to leave behind? And that's from former Congressman, uh, John Lewis. It is also, uh, the N double A C P's one hundred and twelfth anniversary, February twelfth, nineteen oh nine. And today I'm speaking for my two and a half minutes. I had love from N double A C P, not Gina Wilson Stewart. Um, because I have some processes, questions that I wanted to get answers to. And it's not me, it's, uh, N double A C P there. We try to make sure things are run. Uh, according to our mission, it says to secure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights in order to eliminate race-based discrimination and erase health and well-being for all. So these questions I'm reading are from N double A C P, not me. I just want to make sure that was clear. So for the first process, I wanted to ask, as it relates to, uh, sending in questions through email, will the questions be read? Uh, last meeting, I emailed the question in, and my question was emailed to the mayor and council and people attending staff members, but it wasn't read as I sent it in so that the listeners would actually be able to hear what the question was. They heard the answer, but they didn't know what the question was. So I wanted to know the process for that. The second process I wanted to know about is what happens if you're in a study session? I really enjoyed being on a study session today. That was my first time participating. But thirty minutes went very fast. Is there a process where study sessions actually run over? Or are there, are ways cut off at thirty minutes or whatever time you guys have allocated for the study session? So the next thing I have, and I know these will be answered and I finish business. I'm trying to finish my three minutes. So I know you're looking at revising the charter, but the charter that you currently have, I'm not a hundred percent sure that those things are being followed. If I look at section thirty-nine, six, number nine, it says the purchasing director along with the concerned department director determine and recommend in writing to the mayor the name of the lowest and most responsible bid. I remember when we were going for the bid for the telegram and associated news, that process was not followed because the two bidders actually was able to give statements and it was not in writing, giving to the mayor. So, okay, my time is up. I'm going to be respectful. I have other things. I can just bring them up later. But it was two other processes that I wanted to make sure, um, I'm understanding how things are working for the city of Romulus and the leaders.
Okay, thank you, Honesty Stewart.
Mr. Chair, we have another hand raised. And, uh, this is from someone, the last four digits of their phone number is four, nine, six, three. And, um, if you wouldn't mind unmuting your phone by pressing star six, um, and then just for the record, if you wouldn't mind stating your name. You have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Sharon Walker. I'm a Romulus resident. And I'd like to ask a question on item B, request assigned lease with Romulus Municipal Library. Now, if I'm not mistaken, the library was built by the city for the library. So that's a city building that we're getting rent from it or releasing it. Um, and I could see if it was a library that had a president's name on it or something, but that's a city-owned building. So I'd like to know, uh, what are we going to do with the revenue from that building? Are we going to try to, um, upgrade things that our library doesn't have? Or does that go into the, um, um, general fund? The second information that I, the second thing that I'd like to address is item C. The lease with Growth Works Incorporated. Now, we have a brand new court and it has two thousand square foot. And from what I understand, we're going to be, uh, leasing the building for seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to Plymouth from, to Growth Works Incorporated, Plymouth, Michigan. Uh, Huron, Sumter, Belleville, Van Buren, and Romulus participate in paying the cost for that building. Did we reach out to any of the cities, um, any of those cities to see if they had something that they wanted to put in the building instead of going across town somewhere? Um, you know, this is supposed to be mutual, where we help each other. And these people are paying, helping to pay for the court. So I would just like those questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
I do not see any other hands raised or no one else is requesting to speak.
Okay.
Okay, I'll.
Anymore?
I just want to make sure, not missing anybody. Nope.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, we're going to close that part out.
All righty. Takes us to number nine, unfinished business.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
So, uh, I'm not sure if Steve wants to address, there's a couple. I know there are a few questions that came in. I'm sure that, uh, thirty-nine point six, he can answer later via email. Uh, there was, uh, Wilson, uh, the, the second caller that had the, uh, Ms. Walker, that had the questions about the library lease and Growth Works. Um, I guess I'll let Steve answer the lease questions because he drafted that. On Growth Works, I, I think one thing that's important and what I thought we'd do is bring, um, you know, bring them in in the future, meaning they actually provide benefit to not just Romulus, but I think nineteen different communities. So, uh, what this organization is doing now with the court and in other communities is particularly when we have, uh, defendants that are in front of a judge, uh, that have, uh, addictions, um, either both adults and some teens. Uh, by them being right across the hallway from the, uh, courtroom, uh, when the defendant is what's called a clarity moment, realizing that they need help. Uh, they can immediately get help and there's a huge benefit to that. Uh, so it's, it's really an organization that works with the courts and all the communities now. So it not only benefits all the thirty-fourth district communities, but many more in the Western Wayne region. Um, and then the only other comment, I think the, one of the first things that came up were on study sessions. And this study session, uh, uh, you know, I know we had some more interaction and engagement. Uh, it's up to us, as you know, when we set those, uh, the clerk sets them or asks for them, or I do, or the treasurer or council, uh, we kind of try to ballpark what amount of time we need. And so if there's more time required, we can plan for it. If, uh, what happened tonight is there was deemed that there's, uh, more discussion, so there'll be another study session. But that's pretty common. Sometimes you don't know. We are trying to adhere to, um, a schedule to respect what the, uh, the council and the clerk puts out on the agenda. But that's just kind of my two cents on that one. You'll get a, a more complete answer. But, uh, I don't know, Steve Hitchcock, you wanted to give an explanation on the those others or just do that in writing, but I'll leave it up to you. Thank you.
I think I can answer the lease issues. Uh, on the Growth Works lease, um, the amount of money that they're paying. that building is totally owned by the city of Romulus. And the bond for the building, the mortgage, in other words, for that building is a city Romulus obligation. It is not an obligation of any of the communities that are using that court building. And so the, the revenue from lease, the Growth Works, is intended to go into the fund to pay down bond payments on that building. The other question was about the revenue from the court building. Again, a lot of that revenue will go to the obligations to maintain the exterior of that building and to replace equipment on that building also. So it's not just all free revenue. There is a cost in having that building open and operating over and above what's being paid for by the, the library.
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Abdo.
Can someone answer the, Ms. Walker's concern over the revenue from the library? That I think a lot of people don't understand, the library have their own millage and this isn't something that goes in the general fund. Maybe Mayor, you could speak to that?
Sure. Yeah, and so the library, it's very important service. I, I kind of think of it as part of the fabric of the community to have a library. We switched to a municipal library several years ago. As council knows, there's an allocation of millage that the library board, which is established by that Public Act, put in place. So what you get to vote on, on the General Appropriations Act, is the millage for it that, that can't exceed one mil. But what the, the structure of the municipal library is that we do own the building. So the city, we do allocate costs for services, just like other buildings. A little different with the library because they have a board, their board approves some of their processes. A little different than like a DPW, which might go through our processes or police and fire. But very much capturing the cost for that, they really get a very discounted rate. So for example, in that lease that was voted on earlier, and I thank council for that, and the Growth Works tremendously discounted. So it is not like we are charging any kind of close to market value price per square foot. And that's because the library is one of our partners and we want the library, we need the library. There's tremendous benefit, not just to Romulus, but Huron residents alike. So, you know, that kind of helps a little bit. It's, it's a little different structure by the Public Act that established the municipal library. But I think it's worked compared to the old district library system. I think we've gotten a lot more value for the tax dollar, and I think that's what is important to the residents. Thank you.
Is there any more unfinished business? Okay, moving on to number ten, new business. Okay, takes us to number eleven. For approval is warrant twenty-one dash four.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We pay a warrant twenty-one dash four in the following amounts. General Fund, forty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Major Street Fund, forty-five thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars and nine cents. Local Street Fund, nine thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Public Safety Fund, nine thousand three hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Cable DB, two dollars and fifty cents. Mayorman Road Special Assessment, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. Street Lighting Fund, sixty-two dollars and fourteen cents. Oakwood Sad, forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Mark Forfeiture State, thirty-six dollars and one cent. Library Fund, ten thousand four hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents. DDA, four hundred dollars and three cents. Tifa District Two, two thousand forty-one dollars. Binding Road Extension, E-course Construction, seven thousand two hundred and five dollars. Water and Sewer Fund, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Motor Vehicle, twenty-eight thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Technology Services, three hundred and four dollars and twenty-four cents. Retiree Insurance Benefits, forty-eight thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and nine cents. Property and Liability Insurance Fund, forty-five thousand. Revolving Fund, sixty-four thousand forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Current Tax, four thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Delinquent Personal Property Fund, one thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and eight cents. Payroll Fund, one hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Total of all funds, nine hundred nine thousand twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number twenty-one dash four or nine hun- nine hundred, nine, nine hundred thousand nine and twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number twelve is communication.
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Abdo.
Yeah, just a couple, a couple of quick things. I want to concur with, actually under your report, Mr. Byrne, some things you said and the mayor about the great job DPW did with cleaning our streets. I actually got several calls about how great a job the rolls were in Romulus. A church on Fourth Street, and there's some several residents. And so I just want to thank the administration, the DPW team, everybody involved, did a great job. They, one of the residents said they left Romulus and when they went into other cities driving, they was trying to get back to Romulus because their streets in other cities were not good. So kudos to DPW, everybody working together. Our streets looked good, did a great job in all that snow. So thank you for that. And then I also want to read, I bet you I thought this was over, but I have census information. And I think all my colleagues got a letter or a certificate in the mail about the census. Just excited. I thought I was done with this, but when I saw that in our mailbox, it got me all pumped up again. But anyway, I just want to read a few lines, you know, all the hard work, everybody coming together regarding the census. We got recognized for that. So thanks, everybody, for doing that. Just a couple of lines. It said, Dear trusted twenty-twenty census partner, thank you for your valuable partnership during this decent, decennial census. With your support, the region exceeded the national self-response rate of sixty-seven percent. It had the highest self-response rate among all regions, sixty-nine point eight percent. I did want us to get that seventy percent. We ain't quite make it, but you know, we still got recognized anyway. And it said, you exhibited enormous dedication, creativity, and support in developed outreach and marketing activities that engaged, educated, and encouraged households to complete the twenty-twenty census, particularly in historically underdeserved communities. Thank everybody. Thank a team. Mr. Byrne, you said it best earlier. My favorite line, teamwork makes the dream work, and we can't get these kind of results unless we work together. So again, thank everybody for their part in the census. You won't hear my mouth about it for a long time, but just thank you to everybody, the administration, the residents, everybody, the council, everybody who participated in the census, thank you. And then in keeping with Black History Month, Councilwoman Roscoe at the last meeting talked about the recipes. We're still taking recipes for the soul food recipes. Tanya is still collecting those. So please, if you have a recipe, please send that over to Tanya so that we can get those recipes compiled. So keep that in mind. And then the last thing, and this is just to kind of piggyback off the mayor. There's a lot of things that go on in this city that people don't see. It's a lot of work that goes on. And I just want to do a quick shout out. I got this in my mailbox, guidelines, gathering guidelines, indoor guidelines. I'm a very visual person, so I get these guidelines in my mailbox regarding COVID. And it's just good information that we receive. So I just want to thank the team, our emergency manager, Director Kraus, our mayor, the team, just keeping us informed, giving us information, addressing issues. And again, there is a lot of things that are done by our administration that are not seen and they don't get recognized for it. But they do it because it's the right thing to do and keeping our city moving forward. So thank you to the mayor, the administration, and the team, and just to everybody. Just stay safe and stay blessed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
John?
Yes, Ms. Abdo.
Hi, yes, I have an announcement from the rack. The locker rooms are now open. The basketball court is now open. You have to bring your own basketball. Again, you have to wear a mask throughout in the locker rooms, on the basketball court. Organized pickleball will start March second from nine to twelve. Again, you have to wear a mask. There are new hours at the rack, Monday through Friday, six AM to eight PM. Saturday and Sunday, eight AM to six PM. They are running a reopening sale. And so if your membership is up for renewal soon, now between March nineteenth, they have quite a few discounts that are available. You can check with the desk or check with Andy at the desk.
Thank you, Ms. Abdo. I know when you said bring your own basketball, I know I had to take my grandson. Go buy basketball. Yeah, he played basketball there and there. And I toured the place today. Really nice in there. I'm glad to see it's back open.
Yeah, they're slowly starting to open, but we really have to practice the precautions that they're.
Right.
Putting in place.
Thank you, Ms. Abdo.
You're welcome.
I had a, I think sometime, I may not recognize a person when they want a second emotion or something. The only reason I do that is because I can't hear you. If I can hear you, I'll recognize you. Because sometime I go by what I hear, the first person that I hear, that's who I recognize. So I'm not doing this intentionally to annoy anyone, just, just have to speak up and speak louder so I can hear you. Okay. Yeah, okay.
May I add that the pool and the lazy river are also open?
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Abdo. Any other communication?
Yes, I do, John.
Go ahead, Ms. Roscoe.
I just wanted to give a big kudos to the crew that put together the Curling Royale this past weekend and everyone that came out and participated. Had a nice sunny day. I, you know, still wasn't real warm out there. I apologize for not being able to make it actually out to the event. Bringing my dad home from seventy days in the hospital, so that's where I was at. But kudos to them. They had the best year ever. And so far, I should say, because next year, you know, we're going to try to top it from this year. Want to give a big thank you to Bob McCray and Kevin Kraus for always putting this together. And this year, the proceeds are going to the burn camp for kids to go to camp. And they did so well, they're going to get to send at least four kids. And those children are between the ages of six and seventeen. And they get to do things like normal kids do when, when you go to camp, horseback riding and canoeing and, and just all those fun things. But they get to actually interact with other children that are going through what they are because some of those burns can be pretty severe and, and pretty debilitating for them. But shout out to all the participants that come out. It always looks like a great time. And a big shout out to Osborne Concrete, one of the, you know, city's contractors here. You know, he, they made all the stones that was needed. And that just shows how our businesses here always pull together and we always do good things here. So just like it was mentioned earlier, you don't always see everything that goes on behind the scenes, but there's a lot of good stuff going on, a lot of people working together to try to help each other. And again, I look forward to next year's Curling Royale and see what happens with that. Hopefully every year it just gets bigger and bigger. But the ice rink is still frozen down there. So I actually seen people out there yesterday. They were, you know, had scarves and everything else on. So I would call that wearing their mask and having a good time. So there's a lot you can do in, in the community. But again, big thank you for everyone who participated this past weekend in the Curling Royale. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe.
John?
Yes, Ms. Williams.
Yes, I would just like to, on one of the questions that Ms. Stewart asked, and then the mayor kind of touched on it. In a lot of our study sessions in the past, they have went over. And that decision is first up to the, the mayor pro tem and then the remaining of the council. But we have had plenty of study sessions where the time had went over, the actual study session. Because we cannot turn down comments from the public. Now, the timeframe is three minutes to each person that asks to speak on the public comment. But it's still up to the mayor pro tem if he wants to extend that time. But I just want to make that clear because I don't want to sit here and act like we never go over because we have. Also, to the residents, we've been away from the high school with Forgotten Harvest for the last two weeks. We will be back tomorrow. We will start at twelve until three, so you're welcome to come back. I asked the mayor to please put it on the city website that residents will know that Forgotten Harvest will be back at the high school tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I received a text message from our city treasurer. She asked if I would just to announce and to remind everyone of the Dog and Cat Day, which will be held this Saturday from nine to one o'clock PM at night. That would be, I guess it's going to be held at DPW. So bring your, your furry friends, your pets, to have them vaccinated and, I believe, some other things. They do licensing and vaccinations and things. So again, that's this Saturday from nine AM to one PM.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
If I can piggyback on that, I, I remember them saying that you come in and you sign in and then they're going to ask you to, and you know, leave your cell phone number or which vehicle you're in or whatever so they can come out and get you. But to wait in your vehicle with your pet until they call you to come in due to the social distancing. And you're only going to come in with one person with your pet. You're not going to be able to bring children and so on and so forth in with you. So that's just a big reminder to get out and get your pets their shots and their licenses and things. But also the fact that we are going to be practicing social distancing.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roscoe. Bellin me out on that one. Thanks. Is there any, is there any more communication from everyone or anyone? Okay, going once. Okay, going once. Here we go. The time is eight thirty-eight, and that takes us to number thirteen, adjournment.
So move to adjourn. Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb for adjournment. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Night.